Tuesday, June 1st, 2021. This is a work session on website design proposals and city hall update and possibly the funding of the rescue plan. Nick? I'm gonna turn it over to you.
Hello, everyone. So you guys should have in front of you all of the proposals that we had for our, that came in for the website. I can go over each proposal real quick. Or if you guys have any questions, please ask them. So to start off with Civic Plus, they are, they have the highest quote in of the four. At the first year would be about 39,000. For a new website and all the features they offer, they basically check every box that is out there. They dominate the government kind of websites. I gave you guys a couple, I think, a couple links or options to go look at the cities they have in just Iowa alone. They, they're very good at what they do. And they offer a bunch of add-ons of Parks and Rec software. City administration, Civic, like Clerk, some city council management modules that could be add-ons in the future. If you want to move on to all of that stuff to have access for council members, board members, and to, for more information out to the public. They have a mass notification software that is included in this. This would be where people could sign up for email or a text alert. So if the power went out, we would be able to send out a mass notification to that. Or for example, last August, when we had the big storm come through, we could have provided updates on things that were going around town with that. And that's instant notification for people. They don't have to go check Facebook. They don't have to go to the city website. That is have it set, someone clicks it and it is out the door and people are getting notified of that kind of information. As I said, they're they, they, they do it all. And that's kind of why they're the higher priced one, I would believe. They, they knock it out of the park on their other websites that they have out there. Lot of information, just a great flow on their websites. Very easy to work with that I've talked to so far. The reviews that I got from other communities, you know, just respond, you know, within 12, 24 hours of any updates or information that they need or have issues with their website. So a lot of, a lot of options there with them and their templates as well. We can look like other Corville, Muscatine, Bond Durant. Those are some examples that I had, I believe. But we can also custom and do our own too. Moving on to Juice Box. They let me bring up there real quick my notes. They check probably 90, 95% of what we're looking for. And the reason I say they, in their proposal, they had a bunch of add-ons that were not priced in on the 18,450 right away. Those are things that we would have to add on to once we started going. And I think that was the social media feed, our staff directory, a Google Translate option. Social media, our social feed import was $900 additional. The job listing option was another 1750. Apply online was a few hundred dollars. Just some different options that they included at the end of their proposal. And then there's maintenance and all that's unlimited support was 1,500 a year. So those are costs that were not in that initial 1,800 or 18,450 with them. They produce very like awesome websites. They really do. I looked at theirs, once again, reviews from who I'd spoken with was phenomenal. It seemed like just another great company that's out there that to work with as well. And just to back up both, all these companies that I'm gonna talk about run a WordPress website. It's a basic format for websites and just could really comes down to what each company can offer at what team, their team can. The next one is Saltech. They came in with 11,850 dollar quotes. Some of their, they do the Iowa Parks and Rec websites. That's a pretty easy website to navigate around. I use that quite a bit with, for our pool stuff and our memberships. So I'm very, I'm very familiar with that website of theirs. Never had an issue with that. They have a bunch of they'll have some add-ons as well. The translation for our website, which I believe is, should be something we really need to look into whatever direction we go. And those would be additional $500, for example. Special event facility rental was, I believe, a thousand dollars. So there's some prices that are just not included with that overall pricing. But they are one of the lower bids and even their monthly hosting price of 59.95 is at the, the cheaper end for us. Any questions so far till I go on the last one? Okay, the last one is our current website provider and local company, Big Imprint. And with their pricing that they submitted, it really comes down to two options they have. One was current website we have with would be, and then doing any updates that we are asking for would be a 5,500. If we want to completely redesign, have a new look and feel, that would add a 7,800 price tag to, to that. So you'd be looking at a little over 12,000 for theirs. And then they also gave a price for a third-party notification system, which would have been Civic Ready, which would have been, which is from Civic Plus, the first company that I had talked about. Big Imprint does have the quickest turnaround for updates or a new website of nine to 14 weeks. All other companies are somewhere between 16 to 25 weeks on that. Currently, we are doing, we've done some training with Big Imprint lately. Over the last couple of months, we, we did not have the best communication on some things of maybe updating what we would like. But we've kind of moved forward with that. So kind of what I got for you guys is besides what you've looked over yourselves. I know it's a lot of paperwork there from each company.
Does Big Imprint have the capacity to do what the others offer that you've mentioned as far as translation or rental booking or like the instant text message?
So a lot of whether it's Big Imprint or I'll say Saltech, they are going to either have to come up with it themselves for registration or they will go out and get a model or software that is already created. And that would be a link from our website then. As for example, the net, the notification from Civic Plus, which is called Civic Ready, that is what Big Imprint would have to go out and get for us to be able to do that.
So they'd be working with like a subcontractor to finish that?
Yes, because they would go out and get that and then they would create, Civic Plus would create a link for us that would then work on our websites for that Civic Ready. Or another example of Civic Rec, which is their Park and Rec software, would be the same thing with that.
And then that would be like in the cost depending on what, how much they have to do?
That would, yes.
But we don't really know the add-on prices?
We do for the Civic Ready, which is 2,500 for the year. And then I already had a quote for Civic Rec that was on the side just because I have been looking into that. And that is 77,500 for, for us, for the quote that they gave us. So if you stayed, if, for example, if you stay with Big Imprint, we do the upgrades for 5,500, you're looking at additional, if you did the Civic Ready and Parks, the Rec software, you're looking at another $10,000 to Civic Plus, basically as a third-party addition to our website. You won't look at it that way.
What's your recommendation, Nick?
Well, I mean, overall, I would love to swing for the parks and have Civic Plus. But that is a very pricey tag, I believe. But you also pay for what you get.
Nick, I would just add, so I, I would make, we would have to make sure that we have, you know, it's my understanding when we set up new accounts at the city that we're collecting emails and we're collecting phone numbers. So there would be work that we would have to do to be prepared for that as well. Is that correct, Nick? I mean?
Oh, yes, we would have to have community members start jumping on board and giving a, you know, an email when they sign up. I'd say new, new customers would automatically need to supply an email address for the things that we are trying to move forward with, with like e-billing and then the mass notification or an e-newsletter, et cetera. We should also have their cell phone number as a secondary phone number or it's their primary number if they want to accept text messages from us, et cetera.
So I'm just, I mean, if we go that route, I'm, I'm just saying that you would have to assign a staff member to go through all of the accounts, making sure that we have all of that information before we go to that, that type of notification.
So with Big Imprint though, we can do it in stages? Upgrade what we have and then start doing some add-ons?
I, I, I actually, I agree with that. The baby steps of this is all is something that we would definitely need to take. Because if we decide to just do everything at once, I, one, I'm just not going to be able to manage it all, plus Parks and Rec and all that stuff at one time. And granted, it will be a, a long process of, you know, nine to 26 weeks, whoever we go with. But that's some, there is definitely a dedicated schedule that you have to do training with these companies that if you miss them, it's just going to drag out the whole process.
And the yearly cost on all these, Nick?
Yeah. So yearly cost, I have a breakdown. Civic Plus is proposing about 9,141 dollars per year. That is not including the part, the Rec software if we, if we add that on in the future. Saltech is, with what I have in front of me is only 719 dollars and 40 cents for the year, but that does not include any other add-ons that would be monthly fees. And that is after we would accept, you know, their proposal for those add-ons then. Juice Box is from their proposal, 60 dollars per month, which comes out to 720 a year. But that does not include the 650 for maintenance, the 1,500 for unlimited supports. And if we wanted to add any mobile app maintenance or upgrades. So those are additional fees that we would have per month. Cause you would have to have basically unlimited support. So you're able to contact them at any time for issues. If the website crashes, you need a backup, you're gonna need that stuff available to, to us. You're not gonna want your website to be down for a week and you have no way to contact anyone or you can only contact them once a week or once a month, things like that.
And then what would Big Imprint be?
Say that again?
Big Imprint?
Oh, sorry, sorry. Big Imprint would be a total of 177 per month. Or if you add the Civic Plus notification that they quoted on, that would raise you to 396 dollars per month, which comes out to 4,752. And that is with their support in there too, and a couple upgrades that they proposed. Let me go. And that is with the advanced form builder, which was one of the things we really are pushing for is to be able to have forms that are edible, where people can fill them out online. And then just the advanced website accessibility add-on. And that I believe would include any translation that we would want done for our website, which I believe we all would agree that is something that we need in West Liberty.
Is that 4,000 each off in the year?
Yes, 4,752 dollars for Big Imprint per year.
Which is still probably the cheapest of all.
And then if, and then obviously anytime you add on a third party, we will say this, another additional 7,500 for another third party as for part, the Parks and Rec software, you know, you're going to, let me so that's another 625 dollars a month. You know, so that definitely would bump up your cost. That's 12, that's gonna be over 12,000 if you have two of Civic Plus's software attack add-ons to our current website.
And that's, that's 600 and something, that's a monthly charge?
It would come out, yeah, because the part, if, if you went that route, there are other options, other companies for the, for, I, the reason I use Parks and Rec's software is because I've looked into it for a long time now. And there's two companies, three companies that I have prices on. I have one that is a lot less. And it's a very good company. Corville has switched to them in the past. So yeah, it's just, those are the things that we would add on, I would think, in the future. Those baby steps we were kind of talking about. We need to get the base website under control and updated and to the things that we need done that Sherry had in the past as suggested and the things that I and Jacob Lane have suggested to, to Ethan or Justin, the meetings we've had together, what we really want done.
So the 600 would include the Park and Rec software and the the advanced form builder?
Uh, yeah, that's all, yeah, that would already be included, yeah.
And as far as the security of it, Nick, are they all pretty much the same?
Yes, yes. So Civic Plus upfront is a lot of money. Now, if you start looking at our yearly costs after that of the, the upfront money for the creation of a new website. Your, your, you know, 30,831 is a one-time fee to Civic Plus. And then you're looking at 9,141 per year, but that does not include the Parks and Rec software. That does include the notification already because that is, they, they have that included already in most websites that are created for government sites.
Well, how much more advanced if you do Civic Plus? Are we gonna be utilizing all of those services?
Um. That, well, the notification one would be one that we would, we would want. Their other add-ons, their other features that they have, those might be things that we would look at, I would say, if we grew population-wise. So let's say we double and we're kind of needing, usually kind of example, the Civic Clerk stuff. If that is something that could help with man-hours to automate a lot more things, then that would be something we would look into, to our website and to even the backside of what we are working on. Same with, they have a, basically a city council add-on where it kind of manages all the minutes and agendas. And I believe council meeting videos can all be stored in one kind of basket, we'll say, on their websites. And you, as a council member, could have your own personal login and you could have every document that has been from the last, say, two years that you need to go look at, or you would have your current agenda, current council packets, things like that, just to, it automates it a little bit easier for people. So it's almost, do you think, uh, those are you to, you can have someone do it manually, all this stuff? And Parks and Rec registrations, we'll use for example right now is youth soccer. Everyone that signs up for youth soccer has to fill out a form and they mail it or hand it off to city hall. The front desk ladies then manually take the payments, they file the paperwork into a folder and I come and grab the folder. If we went to online registration, that would eliminate some of that man-hours of them handy, uh, doing that manually at the office where all that would be processed online. I would get the notifications, rosters would be generated, et cetera, for that, on that end of things. And if we move forward with potentially taking over youth sports, that's where we would need to be, we would need to move into that, to that software to help. Because the ladies at city hall are already busy and more registration forms from my end of things is just going to overwhelm them.
And Lee, which, which part of the budget was, is it gonna be split between all the different departments?
So if you remember correctly, we did, to get this started, we did a TIP advancement or economic development. And then as we continue down the road, then I split it between all of our utilities and our general fund. Cause again, it's a, it's a service, a way of communication. And we cover, you know, utility communications, city hall communications. So as of right now, it's split between general fund and utilities.
I'm just trying to break it down, like, as far as, you know, how much it's gonna cost each department?
So the breakdown? So the electric has 55% of the cost and sewers 30%, waters 10%, general fund is 5%. Again, the, the, the cost to did that advance with TIP with the understanding that there could be, you know, a potential amount. I think it was right off the top of my head, I think it was 30,000, that somewhere in Elizabeth?
Yeah, it's 30,000. And then we put in, in the administrative, I was kind of looking for that too. Um, oops. Um, I, I wanna say 5,000 a year for the next two more, three more years. So I'll, let me look for that, I'm looking for that now.
So in that case, we might not even have to do the utility breakdown if we're able to use, if we're needing those. The only reason why some utility is because there is utility notifications that go out on it.
And they pay us and all that?
Yeah, I think you're covered, you're, you're definitely, your budget's definitely covered unless you went to the very extreme large 39,000. Then you'd be over for the first year, unless you wanted to find it somewhere else. But I mean, as far as the budget goes, we budgeted 30,000 for the, for the website this year.
I guess I'd like to see us update what we have and then start, as we get that updated and we're current, start doing the add-ons after that, you know, one at a time or a little at a time. Rather than jump into a whole new. My concern with Civic Plus is that it looks like they have a lot of features that we may not use right away.
I had, I think I, I had shared that some, I think it was with Nick and I told him my biggest I think it was with Nick and I, I told him my biggest concern is, um, staffing is, we're gonna have to assign staffing. Um, and just like you said, man, I mean, it, it's a, it's a beautiful model and it's got a lot of bells and whistles and. You know, we have, um, Incode Financial, um, and, you know, there are times where, I mean, there's a lot of modules out there that we don't utilize.
Through Incode.
Through Incode, and so, I mean, I just be concerned that we're paying a lot of money and then we're not utilizing it, if you said that too, there, I mean, there's a lot there. You know, and again, with knowing if we wanna move forward going to that notification. You know, that's something that we can assign now as, you know, staff are going through the payments and they're looking at information, they can be verifying that we have. Both email and both, um, and, and a cell, and a current cell phone number or a telephone number to make contact. The school's kind of fortunate because they have registration through years, so they're, you know, they have that nice notification system and I think they're able to capture and. Um, I know that there's a way, I think, too, that you can go onto their website, you can sign up for that. So those would be just things that further we could discuss if there's an option there that we can say later, for later, yeah. So I'm just, I'm just concerned we wouldn't be able to assign staff. To get the thing done on a timely basis and then we're spending money and not using the product. Again, I mean, sometimes you gotta jump in with both feet, both feet and it is. Going to.
Anybody else have more questions for Nick?
Oh, me again, Mr. Big Imprint, have anything for Parks and Rec?
Say that again, Mr. Rock.
Big Imprint, do they have anything for Parks and Rec?
They do not, that would be something they would have to reach out, they would have to go out to a rec desk, uh, a Civic Plus or, um, Active Net. And as I rattle those names off, if you guys are ever out and about, rec desk is, I believe, Corville uses. Civic Plus, you can just look on their website, it gives a full breakdown of what theirs is. And then, uh, Active Net is what the, uh, Iowa City uses. And I got a price from them like two years ago and they were like twenty-eight thousand dollars or something, like it was ridiculous. So, uh, rec desk for RN comes in about thirty-five hundred and it's based off community size. And then you have the Civic Plus at seventy-five hundred. Uh, I'd have to do a little bit, uh, more research on just comparing those two companies of. What's all offered, I do know that they both just, it's a lot of online registration, swim lessons, camps. Um, scheduling, what could be auto-generated, uh, rosters created. Uh, things like that is what we would want and basically both of them, uh, offer that as well, that I know of.
And so Big Imprint could.
We would have to go out and add them as a third party.
Oh, we would do that ourselves?
Well, we, we can contact Big Imprint, um, and we, I would start the dialogue and obviously this is how. We would go about things, we would need a, a link from our website, would then send you to the hosted website of that company. I believe Mount Vernon's another company or, uh, uh, city that has rec desk off the top of my head. Uh, and, yeah, it's just gonna navigate you to a different site, it's not going to keep you on City of West Liberty, Iowa. It would be, uh, a West Liberty Parks and Rec pay, uh, websites, basically. So the one we currently have for Parks and Rec, as you, if you've been on our website and you click on Parks and Rec. It sends you to the website that the library created for us like eight years ago. When I first take, took over, because we just didn't have anything for information for the Parks and Recreation side. And that's, that, that resembles what would, uh, you would do with those other softwares or modules. Which is still going to generate you to the City of West Liberty page. If people can't find that or have the direct website address of West Liberty Parks and Rec slash. Rec desk slash whatever, you know, that, you know, they might just go to City West Liberty page, click on Parks and Rec. Online registration and it sends them there. And you're, you're ba- you're basically trying to keep people to about a two to three click limit and then they get distracted. And lose interest in finding, trying to find the information that they need, so we always try and keep that in, um, consideration when we're gonna be doing things here.
Thanks.
You're welcome.
Okay. Lee, you're up, City Hall.
I'm going to. We just get out of work? Oh, I have some pictures. Um, well, first of all, just a little bit of, um, yeah, I mean. Not, I've received some more updated information, uh, by state has, uh, also been involved, um. With emergency information, they've been, uh, setting up. A plan to assist, um, smaller cities, um, such as West Liberty. Or even smaller cities with less population, like a thousand or less populations and assist with whatever is needed. Um, with the funds that are coming in and how to, you know, disperse them or divide them out, um. But again, I mean, I don't have, and I, I didn't get a chance to look at the league because the league's now created some more additional. Information as well, but it just seems repetitive, um, I'm not sure when the money is going to be released. Um, I haven't seen anything else updated as of today. Is this the American?
Yeah.
Yeah. And so, uh, the one thing I know is that, um, the discussion has been, um. It's gonna come in, uh, it'll be in two, two increments, you'll get, so if we're scheduled to get five hundred thousand, I know it's a little bit more than that. So then our first, uh, transfer would be the two hundred and fifty thousand. And then in another twelve months, then we'll get the other two hundred and fifty thousand. So we'll not receive the entire sum at one time. Um, that's how, um, setting through, uh, like I said, the league has had a couple, uh, webinars for us to set through and listen. Um, the information to this point has been good, it's been repetitive, but it's still, don't have a date for sure when those funds. Um, I think my understanding is, is that for our city of our size, it's, it goes to the state. And then the state will distribute it similar to like our local options, those tax or rural tax. Um, versus your metropolitan cities, um, they, they have a little different step in there. Um, and I did make sure that our, uh, one of the items it stated was to make sure that your SAM's registration and your guns number was up to date. And so I've done that to make sure, um, and again, I. At, at a town our side, I didn't see that we had to have our, our SAM's registration, but I just went ahead and made sure that we had everything up to date. Um, anyway, just to, to make sure that we've covered, um, because again, maybe by the way I understand is, and it just comes deposited into our funds like we do see our other taxes. Just cannot know, you know, with the timeframe is on that. So it's one of those things, it's, um. I don't know, I mean, further down the road, I mean, once, once the money's here, then maybe then, you know, you can start. I know infrastructure was a big thing, um, emergency, uh, management, uh, training, those type of things, um, set right there at the top. Of the list, similar to what was in the CARES Act, um, for reimbursement. Um, likewise, um, if we had to establish, um, our electronic meetings, if we had to go with, if we had to purchase equipment in order to provide those things. Um, so if we weren't able to get reimbursed on it before, we can go and reimburse ourselves, you know, on those items now. Um, so that's, I don't know, Elizabeth, have you heard anything more? I mean, that's about all I've got so far.
Um, I have not heard anything more as far as guidance at this point, but, um, I know that cities are having conversations. Um, with their leadership to see if they wanted to. Um, kind of like you said, pre-plan where those funds would go when we, when you do receive them and like, like Lee, you said that. You're gonna get it maybe in increments and that's difficult, so. Um, I think when you were wanting to bring this up tonight, it was to kind of see if council wanted to do a pre-discussion or if you wanted to wait, is that right, Lee?
Yeah, so, yeah, the, the, it's just getting feedback from councils, you know, you know, do you want us to plan? I, I guess my recommendation would be, you know, maybe look at a work session coming up in July. Um, again, I'm making some assumptions here, but, you know, probably after maybe July one, I know they're probably trying to be, you know, um. Because we've got our budget amendments in and I don't know if that's the case, but I'm thinking maybe July one and then. You know, be prepared, have some discussion then, I know it will be half, I know what the amount will be, um. And again, I just, if that's something you wanna do or with the feedback fee that you want, um, you know, staff to create some type of a. Couple of option plans about where to, you know, place the money and then open it up for input from you, um. And that's, and again, I mean, if you don't have an answer or you don't know yet, that's fine, it was just. Trying to get feedback or, um, I know larger cities, you know, they're creating websites where they're, where they're creating surveys, where they're engaging the community. And I guess that's understandable since they're metropolitan, they're getting, you know, a substantial amount of money. Um, even though ours does sound like a substantial amount of money, but we all know, um. You know, look at when we get in property tax and that doesn't take long to go, so, I mean, and we're only getting half of it, so. So that's the thing, it's, you know, we're, we're, could be best utilize that. Um, I know our, our sewer infrastructure with the wastewater treatment plant, you know, that would, um, certainly be an item that, um, would qualify. Um, but, you know, again, I mean, road use, that's the other thing, so if your, if your taxes have been, um, if they've gone down. Um, so for example, if road use was affected, of course, because we didn't travel as much. Then we may not receive as much road use, so we may wanna backfill or we don't get in road use tax money in order to, um, you know, replenish that. So it's gonna be my next question, how, what kind of impact are we gonna look at as far as the state funding goes? I mean, are they gonna, oh, you're gonna get this money, so we don't have to give you, you know?
Well, I, I would assume everybody's in that same boat, though.
But it's the, it's the diff- not everybody's getting the same amount, so I, I just would. I don't know how favorable it is in rural areas versus the larger metro urban areas, like if they favor the urban areas more.
Well, the county's getting quite a chunk.
Yeah, the, the county and, I mean, again, I think it's based on your population, your, your, your population size. Um, I don't have all that information sitting here in front of me as to how they, um, but then based, it goes to the county. And then from the county, then it breaks down based on your cities and as my understanding, your population. So, and I don't know the exact calculation, um, you know. I know they had that in the spreadsheet, um, as to how they, how they came up with their calculation. But, yeah.
I'm gonna guess that you're gonna, you're gonna have some more information in the fall and it's very possible that maybe when you're looking at. Your capital improvement plan next August and you get into that process of looking at the next budget. Um, I mean, you're not gonna do a budget amendment now to add half the money because you don't know if you're gonna get it in the next, right? So by then, I would, I would hope you would know something so that you can maybe tweak your CIP a little bit. Maybe you could allocate some dollars to some of the infrastructure there. Um, maybe you could, you know, maybe by then you'll have a, a staffing plan for each of the departments and you'll know maybe where you can. Allocate some operational funds there, I don't know, so, I mean, I think you're probably okay to set, but I'm just. Um, but just know that you're gonna get five hundred fifty-two thousand dollars in the next couple of years, it could help fund your CIP. It could help, there's options, there's options, um, with financing and you also said maybe you wanted to do a program to give back to the businesses during COVID. So there's, there's several things that you could probably look at with that, with those dollars.
If that was the other thing that, that was in there is that, um, you could, um, a city could provide a certain amount of dollars, for example, to economic development, uh, to we. They could create a grant where the businesses that had to come up with, you know, additional expenses, um, to, you know, if they had to, you know, take on. You know, websites or if they had to do, let's say, with Square or something like that, they had to purchase something in order. You know, so they can stay, you know, even though their doors weren't open, but they could still maintain doing retail sales. You know, um, and things of that nature, uh, so that they could apply through there and, and request a reimbursement, so. So now I was gonna try to, I had it put up here and then I lost it, I had, um. Basically, um, just some pictures on, um, unless you have any other questions on the emergency money. I was just trying to look at. I had sent some pictures through. Um, I. Just had spent some time, uh. So, anyway. Just a little bit of update, um, everything is moving on as, um, I think we have a change order in front of us, we talked last week. Um, Tara did go back through with, um, with Daniel, um, that's the, the manager, the. Manager there with the construction with SG, she went back through everything and we were able to, um, reduce that change order request. I think if you remember, we were talking like, there's gonna be twelve, yeah, and so, um. And again, the, the, the pieces that they ran into is, um, originally it was a big garage and so. Um, and now we're, you know, trying to create it to be, um, you know, up to date, you know, office space and so, um. So there's just been some, some things that they ran into or, you know, maybe when they went through originally, they did some measurements and now that they had all the walls out, um. That's kind of changed, it's really neat, I mean, it's, it's nice and open, I will forward you the email with the most recent updated pictures. Um, yeah, it was, we took a tour, uh, Nick and I went through it here weeks ago and, um. There was a dirt floor where the police office used to be and, because they had to bring up the, the flooring in there to get that, so it would level out. Um. But the upstairs with the police department's gonna be, I mean, they're not touching the tiles, they're, um, they, um, we have a gray. Um, kind of a light gray interior. Um kind of a light gray interior picked out for everything, so we make it look very modern and they're very clean. Um, the other part of the change order was, we originally spoke about putting uh the electric. Uh, I want to call it conduit, but I'm not sure if I'm using the right word. So instead of running the electric through the wall, they, we've talked about maybe doing more of an industrial. And Tara's just like, no, we're doing this nice, we're, we're not going to do that, we're going to make this work, so. That, she went back and she was able to, it's like, you don't even have the walls up yet, we can make this happen. So again, um she has and um Jacob is, um I can't think of Jacob's last name, he's what we started him to and he's on. Uh with the engineer and the electric, so they, they've done a really nice job of staying on top of that. And again, SG's done a nice job, I mean, they do a good job communicating and. So, and they, they keep the site nice and clean, I have to say, I mean, it doesn't look messy over there at all, so. Um, so other than that, I mean, we've got a few minutes, so I thought I'd try and give a little bit of a break before we get started into the council meeting, so if you want to. Take a break and then I'll pause this and get everything set up for the council meeting.